I will call the meeting to order. We have roll call, please.
Mr. Schrader, Mrs. Schatzinger.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Gallus.
Here.
Mrs. Kane.
Here.
Gaskin.
Here.
Birch. Mr. Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a prayer from the Archbishop of Canterbury in York for the people of Ukraine. God of peace and justice, we pray for the people of Ukraine today. We pray for peace and a laying down of weapons. We pray for all those who fear for tomorrow, that your spirit of comfort would draw near to them. We pray for those with power over war or peace, for wisdom, discernment, and compassion to guide their decisions. Above all, we pray for all your precious children at risk and in fear, that you would hold and protect them. We pray in the name of Jesus, the Prince of Peace. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right. I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Howard, seconded by David.
Well, I have a question in that. Do we have to do an amendment because it says Tuesday the 8th?
This should have been a new agenda.
Oh, sorry.
So the only change was the date on the new agenda?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Does not appear to be any public forecomment this evening. Is there a motion to accept the informal reports from standing committees and staff?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by David, seconded by John Split. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That is approved. Next is the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as published?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by John Split, seconded by Howard. Any discussion there? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Moving quickly into our agent, or action items. First item tonight is an amendment to the face coverings policy. This is basically linking the CDC called levels of
Community level.
What's that?
The community level?
Uh, CDC's community level for coronavirus cases. This would make it so when there is a high level according to the CDC, we would reinstate the face mask policy as it currently stands. At other levels, it would just be recommended or voluntary. Any discussion or motions here?
Make a motion to approve the changes.
Second.
By David, seconded by John Split. Discussion?
Do we really need the CDC to turn around and tell us locally what we feel should be done? And I'm gonna be honest, they haven't been right on everything through this whole pandemic, so I think we would have a better understanding of what's best for our local community than they do.
We're just using their metric as to number of cases. Not any other.
So then we could overrule that guideline?
We would have to change this.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We're not using their guidelines. We're using their metrics of cases to set
To set levels.
Just, yes.
In Fond du Lac County. Fond du Lac County.
So Fond du Lac County would be setting it following CDC?
You're just going off the Fond du Lac County dashboard?
So, yes, it's basically data that the CDC uses to rate your county. Either green, like yellow, or red. Okay?
So basically, we would be doing what the Fond du Lac County Health Administrator When they say we need to go to an orange or whatever.
Yes.
That's what we would find. So we're following the county, basically.
And that information is published on the CDC website?
Yes.
The county is providing CDC with the numbers.
So we are actually following a local
Metric.
Statistics.
Ultimately, yes.
Versus the national.
Yes.
Okay.
The CDC, I believe, is taking our, the county statistics and giving it a color code. Is essentially where we're at.
Okay.
I'm glad you clarified, because I thought at first we were questioning the competency of health officials and our ability to have a, you know, a better understanding versus health officials that study this and guide us. But I think the question was more so, are we going to be responsive to local numbers?
Yes.
And that it's going to be catered to what our experience is here locally.
Yes.
I'm glad for that clarification.
And the CDC map is down to the county level. So it is following what Fond du Lac County's status is. Any further discussion?
Should there be something in there about the Fond du Lac County? Because, I mean, the CDC could come across and say, nationwide, this is what we gotta do, even though or this is what they recommend, even though our county may be in a low situation. Or they may say, you don't need anything, and our county may be in a higher number situation as they take their averages and that.
It does say under CDC guidelines, when Fond du Lac County
Okay, in paragraph two.
Yes.
In the next paragraph, too. If Fond du Lac County, right there again, too.
Yeah, when Fond du Lac County.
So it does tie it to Fond du Lac County.
Just so there's an understanding out there.
Yes.
That that's where we're going.
Yep, and so basically, what'll happen is that dashboard or that map, if it goes red, we will notify staff. And then it'll be implemented. If it's green or yellow, it'll be
Same.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of amending our face covering policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next item is the increased return fee for a 350 gallon dumpster. This was put forward by the Public Works Committee as dumping a 350 gallon container is costing us more than we are recouping.
I had a question. You're opening it up.
Go ahead.
Why 30? Why aren't we going higher?
I don't believe we're trying to make a profit on garbage.
The question being, if we didn't do it, they would have to go to someone, right?
Right.
So like, somebody would be making money off of it, so why not us?
So here's a couple things. The first thing is the current fee is $15. That's what we charge for only a return. So this is only, you know, the first dump for them is, like, everybody is covered. The second dump is where
Within the week.
Within the week is what we're talking about, is what we're talking about. A handful, maybe three, it only happens a few times a year. And then three particular customers that we go back. We would estimate about $24 that this costs us every time we go back. So at $30, we are
Making a little bit.
Making a little bit, but also covering adjustments for, you know, gas, you know, so there is some there is some wiggle room there that we are still covering our costs and so we're not here all the time going back and forth. So it raises over time. And then, you know, in a few years, we may have to look at it again. But we would be at a point covering our costs, ensuring that we continue to cover our costs at times with high fuel costs and into the future for a while.
So the bottom line is, we're continuing to pick up all the garbage that we currently pick up. Those that have the 350 container get the first pickup as part of the program that the city has adopted currently. And if we have to go back, it's going to cost them $30 within that week to get a dump to get. So it seems like a reasonable proposition.
And
Given the fact they're ahead of the game already, that they don't have to hire a separate firm to pick up the 350.
And just from my education, how does that get billed to the customer?
Basically, I believe, monthly.
So it's a separate bill sent to the city?
Yeah.
My question.
Mm-hmm.
Then anybody can ask for, any resident can ask for a second any week, if they have a big week, and they want their 95 gallon, which is their normal garbage can. Somebody wants that picked up a second time in the week, they can call and they will be billed $15 to do that. So is this the service we provide?
Any further questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the increase.
Thank you. There a second?
I'll second.
Moved by David, seconded by Howard. Any discussion?
I guess I'll just add, you know, I don't know specifically, so it says three customers currently use this.
Regularly.
If they use it regularly, I mean, this could be perhaps a significant increase. But being that, I mean, this is a city service, and we don't want to lose money on this. It seems to make sense. We're not, again, artificially inflating this or something like this. So it seems to make sense.
It is, probably will be a significant increase to their bill. However, knowing what waste management and other companies charge, this is still a significant savings, especially if it's not an every week thing. And just having waste management or one of the other companies on a contract is quite pricey. So this is, in my opinion, a good service, even at the $30, a decent fair price. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the increase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As approved. Next item is a service agreement from Blue Stream Forestry Consulting. This is to respond to the DNR Urban Forestry Grant, or being paid partially by the Forestry Grant. Adam, do you wanna expand on that?
Yeah, so last year, we applied and were awarded a DNR Urban Forestry Grant. It's a 50-50 matching grant. The total the total application was just shy of $40,000, so the award is just shy of $20,000, so $19,923. A portion of that grant application that the DNR awarded was for inventorying our our trees, our urban forests, and then creating a management plan. So Blue Stem Forestry has provided a service agreement to complete that work. Public Works Committee did review it and recommend approval. It is for $24,245, which was what the number was in the application. The work that will be completed is inventorying every boulevard tree, as well as every park tree. Which means going physically to each site, GPS pinging it, talking about its size, its species. Whether it needs to be removed, pruned, it's healthy, it's happy, so on and so forth. That information then gets uploaded into our GIS system to be managed and viewed. And as well then put into a management plan that says, okay, you have X amount of species of this, you have X amount of this. And here's, you know, a recommendation over the next five years of how to operate to tackle your challenges. Okay? So they'll talk about everything from, you know, you should be removing this amount of trees, or treating this amount of trees, or pruning this amount of trees every year to better manage the urban forest. One of the main driving forces behind this was the storm in July. We do have some inventories on spreadsheets and kind of ideas, but it's just not easily managed or well managed at this point with the technology that we are also implementing for other departments. So this will give us in a very good position where we'll be able to better manage our forest in emergencies and for regular operations. So yeah.
So then who maintains it going forward?
So then city staff maintains it moving forward. So like, we'll be able to log into the GIS system. If we cut down a tree, okay? We can go in and remove that tree on the GIS system. Or if we plant a tree, we can go out and use an iPad to put that tree, you know, log that tree in that place we put it. So it takes a lot of, you know, we'll train into that, but that is the end goal. And, you know, just speaking in past experience, you know, that tool is very important. But then also getting an inventory, knowing how many maples you have, knowing how many elms you have, knowing how many ash you have is, allows you to make just better decisions for the forest. And right now, you can tell there's a lot of ash because they're all dying. But we don't even have a clue on how many ash trees we have to remove. And, or that will be dying dead standing trees in the next probably two, three years. So Public Works Department is currently removing a lot of ash trees. But you still see a lot of them. So those will continue to be prioritized in this plan with EAB. And Emerald Ash Borer, for those who aren't aware, we have it, it's here. And it's been here for a long time, and we haven't really grappled with that totally, because we don't even know how many ash trees we have. So that alone is a significant benefit or improvement to having a plan and having the inventory alone. So
Is the city's cost gonna be half of that?
Yes.
Twenty-four, two?
Yep.
And we had that budgeted?
Yep.
We had 12 budgeted?
We had like $19,000.
Okay, 19, yeah, okay.
Because we still have to plant, and then we did receive a grant from the American Transportation Company for $2,500 to help with the planting portion of that. And then we have some donated funds that have been sitting aside for forestry for many years. So all this, at the end of the day, too, will lead to the goal of trying to become a tree city again. Tree City USA. So we budgeted for it, and, yeah, so.
So when we remove an ash tree, we look perhaps to plant a new tree in the future?
We have to start planting trees with the amount of trees that have
Been lost.
Been lost, and with EAB. And this will put us on a a better path to understanding.
Hard to put up. Thank you.
I like that in the statement, it says that, you know, arborists make recommendations to increase the health of trees and attempt to reduce the risk of living near trees. I mean, such an important sentence in my mind. And, you know, trees are a definite resource in this community, you know? Who doesn't love sitting underneath the shade of a tree in the hot sun, or just, you know? I think if we can increase the longevity of our trees, that also, in the long run, is saving us money in that sense. And my understanding of, speaking of the ash situation, you know, or any disease that could hit a tree, you know, hit a tree. Not only is a disease that's hitting a tree make that tree perhaps more unstable, but I feel like it's our duty as citizens to try to reduce the spread. So if you can take away sort of the food in a certain area, maybe that decreases the spread to other areas, is my understanding. So anyways, I think that this is a smart, a smart thing to do.
Will the report say, I know it's gonna pinpoint the tree.
Mm-hmm.
But will it give the detailed description of, you know, this limb has to come off, that limb?
I don't know if it'll be that descriptive. It'll basically, and I did a similar project in my previous community. And essentially, what you get is a tree inventory with every, with a unique ID, its species, its size, and then its rating, and a recommendation for removal, pruning. So, you know, it'll probably make note if there's a big problem with it. You know, identify specific hazards. But really, then what you do is you're able to say, okay, we got a crew that needs to remove trees today. Here's a map of the priority trees, the lowest ranked trees. So they rate them on a scale of one or zero to 100. Okay, let's remove a bunch of tens, because they're, you know? So from the standpoint of specifically calling out issues, that'll be in a case-by-case basis. But I think some of the other, you know, metrics that they use, whether it's rating or just, you know, saying it's a red red, red tree, is going to direct, you know, what we do in our operations with the tree. So
I just didn't want to spend, spend the money, and then we have to hire an arborist to come in and say, this one is recommended to be pruned, how do we prune it? You know what I'm saying? So
And Kelly, she's an arborist, you know, she is she's great. Like, I've worked with her, and she works all across the community. I've, you know, she presents with
For those listening, you wanna share who Kelly is?
Kelly Tuttle is the owner and the arborist of Blue Stem Forestry. So, you know, she'll walk this entire community and map our trees. And and then, you know, what we can do is prioritize that list, and, you know, our people have to be trained to properly prune things. We don't want to do more damage by the actions we do to a tree either. So we wouldn't just have someone come back and say, well, yeah, you gotta, I mean, it'll and you can kind of tell, you know, what needs to be taken out of it if it needs to be pruned. So
Okay.
So, yeah, we wouldn't. And we could always call Kelly and say, what did you think of this tree? And she'll, she'll let us know before we do anything, you know? But, yeah.
I know that because of all the people that need it to, you know, help with their trees because of the storm, we have a lot of great local arborists. The difference with this is, it's not just an arborist, this is also, again, a whole database system. I mean, they specialize in sort of this right, mapping it out, the data, as opposed to, obviously, we could, we could look at a local arborist, but they wouldn't have it's, that's a different plan. I mean, they can
It's a completely different level of service.
Exactly.
And we're gonna get a DNR qualifying, DNR quality or driven plan to submit to the DNR at the end of this that says, okay, you know, you followed the grant guidelines to create a plan that, you know, meets our specs for the urban forestry programs. And, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just a different She does this in just about every other community across the state. So, yeah.
Just a question for the people that are be watching. It's the trees in the terrace or so many feet from the center line? If there's no terrace?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so anything in the right of way, so the boulevard, or if there's no sidewalk, there's, you know, I think, you know, a right of way of around 60 to 66 feet on every street, and then we'd be doing every park.
Okay.
Adam, this will also get us a recommendation on putting us on a rotation for planting trees, because we have so many older trees in our community, and we lost a lot of them in this last storm. We don't want to go out there and plop in 50 trees, all the same age, you know, in the same year, and then down the road, city runs into the same thing. This will give us a chance to rotate different varieties of trees being planted at different years and stay in that mode so that we can continue to have the beautiful community that we do have.
You are correct, and a part of this is identifying planting sites. So then, you know, those planting sites also identify generally the size of tree that can go there. So we're not planting the wrong tree in the wrong place that caused problems in 20 years for everybody, whether it's under a power line or near someone's house. On top of then, diversification of our tree species with replanting is incredibly important. And that's why an inventory is important, because if we have 60% maples and we start planting more maples, we're gonna and all of a sudden, there's a bug that comes after maples someday, we'll be right back in the same boat. So it kind of all comes full circle to what we're trying to do.
I'll make a motion to approve the service agreement with Blue Stem Forestry Consulting Incorporated.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the service agreement with Blue Stem Forestry Consulting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Moving on to the facilities' master planning proposal. Adam?
All right, in your packets, you should have had a proposal from SEH. So the city did issue a request for proposals to complete master planning for two primary facilities, City Hall and the Public Works Building in area. We received five proposals. Staff reviewed them, narrowed down to two finalists. One was SEH, the other was FGMA Architects. Those two finalist proposals were reviewed by Public Works Committee, and they recommended the proposal from SEH for final consideration. If you're not aware or don't remember, SEH has worked with the city. They came and presented their master plan for the public, sorry, the water system, a few months back or many months ago. So they have a relation, existing relationship with the city. The idea here is to review this facility, plan for the future, put together sort of a comprehensive list of improvements and recommendations. And, you know, allow us to make better wise investments in this facility and look at our space needs as, say, the senior center moves out or vacates the premises, as well as you know, just last week, EMS had a report that said facilities need to be looked at. So that will be a component of this as well for City Hall. And then the other side of this then is Public Works and the garage down there. We had sort of started this process thinking, yeah, we'll do kind of the same thing. You know, review the structure, see if it can be, you know, reused or improved. But that structure was built in 1957 and is at its end of life. So the idea there would be to begin planning and studying that facility, the needs of that facility. Whether it be size or are using, you know, our current portfolio of equipment to properly, you know, size a garage. Because currently, the facility is undersized. So kind of beginning the steps to lay the groundwork to get to building a new city garage. That obviously is a big project. We have a lot of work to do to lead up to that kind of project. But to better understand and set the proper groundwork for it, we feel that this is an appropriate step for that project, as well as for City Hall, and to basically start grappling with some of our longer-term needs with our facilities. So that's where we're at. The overall cost is $25,000. We have the ability to pay for it in our budget. Obviously, there's another master planning proposal as well, and we have the ability to cover that within our budget as well.
So remind me, we need to vote on this. So if it's already part of the budget, money's already allocated, but we are voting on this because this is a contract that we, part of our duties as council is to approve, correct?
Yeah, so I mean, and we'll get into this at a later date. I'm not comfortable just in general signing a $25,000 contract to do anything
Right.
without council's approval, regardless of if it was in a budget. At the same time, too, within this budget, we had $25,000 in general planning. Okay? This is a $51,000 planning effort. By pulling funds from other areas within the budget, we can afford to do this. Okay? I'm saying that with confidence. I'm saying that with confidence, um, because we're pulling in EMS funds, we're pulling in water funds, we're pulling in, um, you know, general fund to other areas to, to complete this. Um, and, um.
You're talking collectively.
Collectively, yes.
Between the two.
Between the two. So, so, you know, yes, it is a contract. Um, and at the end of the day too, there will be a, a report that comes back to the councils, you know, kind of saying here, you know, this is what we're dealing with and, and here's our recommendations. So, uh, gaining, you know, your approval and support is, I think, very important in the process if we so choose to move forward with it. So.
In clarification between public service or administrative kind of, um, services that you're seeing this evening as opposed to public bidding. You get proposals, you get RFPs, you bring them to the council after a recommendation by staff and in this case, Public Works. And they're telling you, this is the one we favor. It's still ultimately, if you had some strong feelings, you might feel feedback to the administration. I would prefer this because I saw this and I, I know about that company. So that's the second piece of it. So it's within your wheelhouse.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, facility master planning proposal from SEH for the cost of 20.
25.
25 even?
Yep.
Not to exceed that.
I will second.
Thank you. So moved by Howard, seconded by David. Further discussion? John?
Yeah, the thing I liked about it was, and I hope I'm reading it right, that they, they will give us like a site and partial floor plan of like the DPW. So it'll give you a conceptual. What I'm thinking is they're going to give us like conceptual idea of what it should be. So there's something that we can physically look at, correct?
Yes. I, I think that's the end goal is to look at, you know, study the current site, study the current, you know, where, where will it fit? Make recommendations, uh, there and then, um, you know, look at our equipment and say, well, yeah, you have six pile trucks that you're trying to park inside of a building that was built in 1957 and they don't fit anymore. You're playing, we talked about it at Public Works, you're playing Tetris. How do you build a building to appropriately fit the things you need? And then they will take that in sort of, you know, schematically or maybe not full 3D renderings like you saw with the senior center quite yet, but they will put together, here is where it should, you know, where it could go or where it should go. Here's the size, um, and here's why, you know?
And I would imagine to be at the level of the examples they gave in the beginning of the proposal where it's just a basic floor plan and how the trucks fit.
But that always, it just helps when you can see something.
Yep.
And, okay, thank you.
More for the public. Here, it might be a little more difficult with that, but, um, we'll see, you know, where we.
Yeah, here they would use the same footprint, I would imagine.
Yep.
Have to redo.
Okay.
I also like that they, um, will share sustainable features. It says sustainable features exploration, you know, as we look at, um, as a, as a city. I think, um, that these will be conversations, we will have to have more and more conversations about. And so I like that that's part of their plan as well.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the facilities master planning proposal from SEH, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next we have the park master planning proposal from MSA.
You want me to talk again?
Your honor, roll.
I'll just start by saying that, uh, Public Works again reviewed.
Parks and Rec.
Oh, sorry, Parks and Rec, uh, this one, uh, reviewed, uh, was it four proposals? And, uh, this was the, uh, recommendation of the four.
So yes, very similar. We issued a request for proposals for master planning services for, um, four of our parks. Uh, we did include Eagle Park as well in the original, um, uh, RFP. Uh, we received four responses. Um, we reviewed them at a staff level, brought them to Parks and Rec Committee. Parks and Rec Committee made the recommendation to select MSA. Um, the overall price is $26,000 and it would create master plans for Barlow, Selfridge slash Horner and then Suresco Parks. And again, um, we have money in the budget to complete this. And, um, you can kind of see, uh, what MSA has done in the past with parks as well as, um, you know, our history with them. Um, we have worked with them on many projects recently, including the, uh, Senior Center and Trailhead Facility. So they are well aware of, of some of that. Particularly, uh, one of the things we wanted to note was, um, the public engagement aspect of this pro- uh, project, uh, is something very important. And I think, um, MSA and their proposal did a, a job, a good job of, of, uh, laying that, that out as well. Um, so yeah, very similar to the SEH, but with parks this time.
And at this time, we're, uh, staff was recommending just going ahead with the Barlow, Selfridge, Horner and Suresco portion for the $26,000.
Yeah, that's, that's what we decided is, uh, taking Eagle out because it is a smaller park at this point in time. And, uh, with the MSA coming in and doing the other three, we might pick up enough information to be able to do something like that within-house for Eagle and not have to rely on paying out the extra funds, you know, for that smaller facility.
Do you know how much it was?
Uh, Eagle Park was $9,000, was it right?
Yep.
You saved me my question because actually that was going to be my question. We go to Eagle, but there's nobody ever at Eagle.
It's a neighborhood park and it's that old fashioned neighborhood park. Like years ago, when I grew up here, which is eons ago, um, the neighborhood parks were the elementary schools. Just the people in that area go to them. But it doesn't mean that we're going to forget about Eagle Park. It's just, we're getting these other three, we want to get taken care of first. Learn from it and then apply what we've learned to Eagle Park.
And if we decide that we need professional help.
We have that option.
We can come back to them at a later date.
Is, is this covering the whole of Barlow? All the way at that back kind of forgotten about part of it?
That's green space.
Or forgotten about.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's covering the whole park and, you know, through, through public engagement, through Parks and Rec Committee review, through staff review, you, you know, designing the park system as a system, like a cohesive system. So you're not, you know, putting same things all over the place. You're, you're diversifying based on what people want, you know, um, so it's, it's, um.
And it's also working with MSA before and that, they'll come in with the recommendations to give each park its own personality. And we, we have some of that right now with like Murray has the Little League facilities and, uh, the disc golf course where Barlow has, um, the courts up there and, uh, the full-size baseball field. And then, then you go to, uh, Selfridge and it's got the ponds. So, you know, they'll, they'll work to give each park, you know, its, its identity for us to, uh, say, hey, you want this? This is the park you go to. Or you're going to have a family group and you like doing this? This is where you want to go and instead of like Adam just said, putting everything in the same park and, okay, here you go.
Is it possible for Selfridge Park to have them look at a walking path that would go around the, the basic park down Fenton Street to the apartments down by Douglas, around Douglas and then like down Scott Street? And picking and choosing where they can go on, on private, you know, on city streets or sidewalks, but then also get close to the water. There was talk about a trail like that about, it's probably 10 years ago now.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know.
We had looked at doing that in what we call Stewart Park.
Okay.
Which is the, the part of it that we really don't have an easement into because of the railroad. And, uh, but we, yeah, that's what we had talked about doing there was having a walking trail all around that. And then we had looked at using that area also as a nursery for trees for the city at that time. And, um, it just sort of got put away because there was no funds to do it. But, you know, the biggest thing is the easement in there. Uh, you know, technically you're not supposed to cross those tracks.
Right.
And people do it all the time. We see them drive across and that. Um, you know, hopefully knock on wood, nobody ever gets caught by the railroad. Um, but, uh, it, it would be a great place to have a, a walking trail back there.
Is that something that they couldn't look into?
There's no doubt in my mind that there will, that there won't be a component of trails around the pond.
Okay.
At the parks over there. There's no doubt in my mind. And whether it is the most complicated thing with the, the, uh, railroad or it is, you know, a dream because of private property or easements needed, we will still put those things in place, um, in this plan to give the vision for what you've described because I think that is just a natural improvement that makes sense. So I think if, if people want to see that and, and, you know, the Parks Rec and the county council want to see that kind of project implemented in this plan, it'll definitely make it. There's no doubt in my mind it'll make it in. I'm just saying, no, I, I'm, I, I won't allow it to, to not because.
Trails are big right now.
It's.
That's a.
Right, yeah.
That's something that everyone's always looking into is trails because everybody wants to get out, walk, exercise. Um, so yeah, trails will definitely be a point of emphasis.
I'm going to hold you to your word.
It'll happen.
Mark it down, John.
It'll, it'll happen.
It's on record.
I've already walked it off.
Okay, thank you.
So there's some additional services, um, that, one was public engagement and getting discussion groups. The other was grant assistance. Is that included with this or is this something we'd have to pay extra for?
So grant assistance is something we would pay extra for if we had an identified project and we wanted to apply for a grant to do that project. So that would be separate after this. The public engagement side of things. Um, I, there is a, there's a, a strong component of it that's included. I would have to look back to see what wasn't included, um, in there. Um, which focus group meetings, which is, um, I think more of a targeted, like, specific meeting that they want us to come back. So they've put in place like, you know, the idea of doing surveying and public engagement sessions and coming to, um, to Parks and Rec meetings. If we wanted them to come and do something like, say, specifically for a friends group or something like that, outside of kind of the parameters we set in the RFP, they would charge an additional, you know, a hundred and $50 an hour. But I think we can get a, that, that won't be a problem.
I wanted to voice my support for looking into this trail around Mill Pond. I, uh, I'm, I'm really grateful that, for the Park and Rec Committee to bring this to us because, um, you know, study after study, even just recently during this pandemic has showed that, uh, people want to be outdoors. They are even looking at, if they want to move to a city, looking at their parks. It's a part of their decision on where they want to call home. So, um, you know, I will say that when, when we look at the cost of this, at first, 26,000 is nothing to blink an eye at. And, and I thought to myself, well, you know, quickly buy some nice equipment for that amount of money. Uh, but then two things, one is I have been in some conversations with, uh, there was a donation made to Comonis about, and they, and they want to use that for some park equipment. And so I've been in conversations and looking at how much park equipment costs. And that doesn't go very far. I learned quickly. And also thank you, Adam, to, I was talking to him. And, and for this amount of money, which really wouldn't buy much, uh, for equipment, it, this, the plans that we will get is then, you know, to the point of asking about grant assistance. It sounds like we are then positioned for when money becomes available for grants, we have these plans. And so it sounds like this is necessary if we want to be a city that competes to get the actual money that will be transformative to our parks. Uh, so it seems like a really, really smart idea as we are forward looking for our city.
Yeah, it all starts with a plan when it comes to applying for a grant. So having it on paper, ready to go in the can, or even having an idea for somebody to then begin a fundraiser for, um, that is the goal here. You know, we're going to think bigger, I think, and, and engage the community and design these in a way that fits what we want and, um, and allow us to dream maybe bigger than we've dreamed in the past. And, and with that, I think we can get, you know, we can sell it better as well as, you know, uh, chip away at things over time and, and work with our local partners to, you know, fundraise. Um, you know, there's components of this, uh, that we are missing in parks, um, whether it's trails or accessibility or inclusive play. Um, there are other communities that have done similar processes and instead of applying for a grant, they've used it to fundraise for a, a big park overhaul. Um, so, so painting the picture on, you know, on paper or through a story map and, and engaging the people in the community and potential fundraisers or even, you know, DNR showing that we have our stuff together, um, is very important. So, um, and I have worked with MSA just in the past to develop plans that were well-vetted, planned out, you know, here's the project and taken that to apply to grant programs and we've received funding. And part of it is the quality and the, the work behind the application.
And we, we currently have a program that's called Friends of the Park. And I've talked to a lot of people that, uh, would like to make donations to it, but they want specific ideas, you know, and it's, it's easier to turn around and have people jump on board when they know what this is going for versus, oh, this is just going to be a slush fund. You know, so with this, uh, master plan, it'll give us those projects, as Adam said, that we can turn around and look at, uh, specifically stating this is number one, number two, number three. You know, and these are the costs and people will step up or will be able to apply for grants. Just gives us more direction on what we need to have done.
I also, Adam, you had just mentioned about ADA accessible. Um, we had asked the county, you know, what is, what does that look like as far as equipment across the county for ADA accessibility? Um, you know, that could be something on our county website where families are looking to come to the area. They can see where accessible equipment is. And we currently, because again, we don't really have a, a database of this. We don't, we don't, we don't know. And again, this helps us. Uh, and so that's, that's exciting as well.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the park master planning proposal for MSA.
I'll second.
Moved by David, seconded by John Gatzke. Any further discussion?
Do you need to add what parks is included in the, in the formal motion? I guess as presented is.
Yeah. Do you want to clarify that this is for Barlow, Selfridge, Horner and Suresco?
As presented in the proposal.
Okay.
So that is the, the Barlow, Selfridge, Horner and Suresco proposals totaling $26,000.
Any further discussion? John?
And I'd like to add, it sounds like the public engagement component is, is a given. Uh, but I guess I just want to make a statement that, you know, that's also part of this approval process here that we are saying we will engage the public.
Yes, they laid out two phases of public engagement.
The Park and Rec Committee, we, we feel that the input from the community is huge because they're the ones that are using it. It involves their neighborhood areas. So that's a big proponent of it.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor of approving the park master planning proposal from MSA? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That is approved. Are there any project updates or staff reports? Ann?
I just want to say that our assessors, associated playbook consultants. I just want to say that our assessors, associated appraisal consultants have sent out notices to the property owners whose properties will be visited this year for exterior inspections. The field staff began their work yesterday and will continue for approximately three weeks. The field staff will have letters of introduction from the city. They'll also have ID on them, and their vehicles will also say associated appraisal consultants on the side. Our open book this year will be held virtually again on April 18. Appointments are made through associated appraisal, and the board review will be held May 24 from 3 to 5. And I also sent out absentee ballots today to those that I had applications for on file. March 22 begins in-person absentee voting, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. I will do our public test of our machines on March 30 at 4:15. According to the court order, we cannot use absentee ballot drop boxes. So you will either need to mail in your absentee ballot or bring in-person your absentee ballot. And the person that the absentee ballot is issued to is the only one that can bring it in, or an agent. An agent is always already just for hospitalized orders right now.
Anne, I have a question. For mailing them in, when do they need to be received by?
8 p.m. on election day.
Okay, thank you.
And the post office encourages you to mail them at least a week before.
I know that you've already thought about this, but I'm just going to state it out loud and request that, will this be put on the city's Facebook page as far as when in-person absentee voting begins and what the hours are?
It's on our website.
Yeah, we can, we'll throw something out there. Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Anne? All right, Adam?
Um, what do I have? We did not get a neighborhood investment fund grant. So we are moving forward still with our senior activity center. So we will announce that we will be doing a groundbreaking. We will post this next week. You are more than all welcome to join. I will post something, Ludd, saying that they may be there-
Maybe.
March 15th of next week at noon at Murray Park, just for a quick ceremonial groundbreaking. We'll have the pre-construction meeting prior to that with staff and the contractor in MSA, go over the project, then head up there to do a, there'll be hard hats and, I don't know. So you are all more than welcome to come. We will get that out to the public as well after this meeting. And you can see everything else we've been up to and my report.
Mayor, I do have one thing.
Yes.
This weekend will probably be the last weekend for the skating rink as Mother Nature is kind of heating things up. We've had a good season in that. Unless she decides to throw us a curveball and really get cold, this will be the last weekend for maintained ice in that. So anybody has any questions on that, they can always go to the skating rink's Facebook page and get updates on that.
What a great community asset.
All right, I have no appointments and no special messages for the evening. Any future agenda items or comments from council members?
I have one. It's probably not for an agenda item, but I've been asked to ask this question again. What the city ordinance is on dilapidated or burned-down houses, you know, how quick they have to be removed. We have grass ordinances, we have no parking and yard ordinances. And there seems to be question on a certain home that has not been removed after a fire.
As to the specifics of the ordinance, obviously, it's handled on a case-by-case basis. I think we can go throughout the community and find homes that we might classify dilapidated as a terminology. Clearly, one that has been damaged by fire is under review by the city staff and administration regarding the best course of action to follow. There is litigation involved regarding a particular property in the community which you may be referring to. And that is part of the balancing act that the city is going through to determine when and how to force removal.
Okay, so we don't have a straightforward 120 days?
Absolutely. Doesn't exist. It's, it's an analysis of each property that is brought to our attention through citizens, through police, through fire, through whatever means council representatives, and then of those individual properties in the site out of pursuit. And this one in question needs to be acted upon. There's no question about that. But there are some extenuating factors.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Was that John?
Yeah.
Yeah. Moved by David, seconded by John Split. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:56.